Will maybe be here in a little bit. He's actually at Riverside High School. So, we actually had a, um, um, Canal County Board of Education had a special meeting up for tonight to talk about the closure of Bell Elementary, and so that's where he's at. Um, so if you want to stand, please say, uh, "Belle."
I would probably thank you all this day with your blessed break of this time, Lord. And the guys is here to the meeting, Lord, to end up handing us the plan, Lord. Make the decisions, Lord, will be the decisions you have, Mr. Mike, and who gets with the plan. God's the right to know, the guys that rules you, what you have to do, and what's to learn.
What's that, the question?
Hello, ladies and gentlemen, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in whose liberty and justice are strong.
All right. With the roll call, Councilman Sander.
Here.
Councilwoman Fletcher.
Here.
Councilwoman Vickers.
Here.
Councilwoman Dowden.
Here.
Councilwoman Woody.
Here.
Mayor Fletcher, we rose smart as absence, and court signer. So we do have a court. Um, we did send out the minutes for the September the seventeenth regular meeting. Um, I will tell you, under the roll call, unfortunately, I did say Councilwoman Woody, so I will correct that. But if you have anything else, I'll give you a few minutes to look through that. Do we have any questions, anything that you see? I thought that was a chair. Any questions, any comments, anything that you see? Uh, we just need to make a motion to accept the approval of the minutes for the August twentieth regular meeting.
I'll make a motion with the correction.
And I'll correct that. Um, okay, I'm sorry. Melanie makes a motion. We have a second.
Certainly.
All right, chair. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? All right. I saw, I said I made a correction. All right, so if you take a look at the financials that we handed out for the month of September, um, we actually had income for the month of Sept-ember, September, of a hundred and sixty-five thousand, six hundred ninety-seven dollars and ninety-five cents. I'll tell you that most, there was a huge chunk of, um, ad valorem taxes that came in. Um, say, West Virginia has basically stated that if you pay taxes and personal property taxes within a certain period of time, you can claim them on, um, the taxes this year. And, um, I think they had seen a huge amount of income come in, or at least, um, we saw a huge amount of income come in. Um, which is good, because we also had expenditures for the month of September of a hundred and ten thousand, fifty-six dollars and twenty-five cents, uh, leaving us with a surplus for the month of fifty-five thousand, six hundred forty-one dollars and seventy cents. The biggest expense that I saw, um, was, uh, blanket insurance across the board through Travelers, thirty thousand, six hundred seventy-six dollars and eighty cents. That's our insurance for the year. Crazy part is, um, that's part of the insurance. Um, sanitary board paid around fourteen thousand of that, so we're looking close to a fifty thousand dollar insurance, um, premium, basically, for Travelers, for the town. And that's the blanket insurance across the board that has gone up. Um, you'll also see towards the top, under the expenditures, P A, six thousand, three hundred fifty-nine dollars on back towards the back. Um, I just bring that up, because we'll talk about that here in a few minutes. Um, P A actually is going to increase their money as well. But anyway, any questions, anybody has across the board on the financials? All right, we just need a motion to accept the September financials as presented.
Make a motion.
All right, Mark takes the motion. We have a second. All right, Mike, second. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed? Uh, under Old Business, uh, Town Festival and Car Show recap, uh, Melanie, if you or Nicole, or you and Nicole would like to kind of give us a recap of that. I, I will tell you that, um, with, and Jacob, I know, were up here, of course, I mean, Melanie was, Nicole was, and Michael was. Uh, I actually had, considering the weather started off kind, Miss Blue volunteered the whole two days. Uh, considering the weather started off nasty on Saturday, I was really worried that the car show would be a flop, and we ended up with around thirty-seven cars, which was a lot more than I thought. So, I did, um, I've known Terry Godby from Hot Daisy Dog for twenty-seven years, and he, he did express his gratitude. He said, in his mind, it's not about the amount of money he makes, it's about the smaller communities and the involvement, and, and he loved it, and he said he definitely wants to come back. Um, I, my wife also has known Craig, she's since high school. And Craig actually, if you know anything about him, he takes his vendors, he, he vendors at the State Fair, Regatta, um, all, all of the big shows. He has about four or five trucks that he, uh, takes in any certain area. And I was kind of worried that we might be too small for him. He did turn a profit, even by putting some of his employees in hotel room. So, uh, he, he did speak very highly of it as well, but.
As far as the vendors goes, we had, um, fifty vendors that signed up, paid, well, all of them didn't pay, but most of them paid. We only had four that didn't show up out of the fifty, so that wasn't bad. Um, we had some good new stuff this year. Uh, I talked to everyone throughout the fair, and they're all wanting to come back the next time we have it. Uh, also Craig's been called me afterwards and talked to me and told me that he did make a profit. His food was a little bit more pricier, just because he's used to the bigger fairs and festivals. Uh, but he, he was very happy, very pleased. Uh, Terry Godby was very pleased. And those are the two vendors, the big food vendors that we had to come in this year to try something new. Um, all the small vendors that, you know, sold the tarts and the, the car smelly things and all that stuff. I mean, everybody seemed pretty happy. We had one complaint, but that's okay, because we have that complaint every year. And, um, you learn, you know. Um, so sometimes if it doesn't work, you have to change and, and do something else. But overall, I think it was a success. Uh, everybody seemed to have a good time. The kids seemed to have a good time. And like John said, you know, I was really worried there to start with, but everybody seemed to come out and everything, and then Nicole pretty much took care of the car show and everything. So I'll let her talk about that.
Well, I just wanted to thank John and Jacob for their DJing and announcing. You all were, um, commended for that and said you all did a good job. Um, I think, like you said, with the bad weather, we did have to get to our cars, and I think everybody was happy with our judges and the judging, and I think it worked out well.
You mentioned the vendors. Uh, my daughter, Brooke, got to be selling, um, air fresheners. Just, you want water, honey?
I'm okay, thank you.
Um, selling air, um, air fresheners. And right around noon, I said, "Hey, how you doing?" She said, "We sold ones." By four o'clock, they sold over a hundred. And I was like, "Oh my gosh." So, yeah, the afternoon definitely took time. So, I know that we'll talk more about this as a council, um, in the future. Um, there are some ideas about what we can do next year, or the year after, whichever we approve on. I know Melanie and Nicole and myself and David kind of just expressed some ideas. One thought is, instead of making it two days, uh, making it one day. Um, one thing we did notice that the car show ends, ends at, uh, two.
Three.
Three bands go on at five. So for two hours, we lost people, of course. So we talked about running that, the, the, if the car show goes until three, maybe starting concerts at one, because I think they're far enough apart to where they can actually coincide. So, just ideas we can throw out there, and we can talk about in the future. But be thinking about, um, one, it used to be an every other year thing. Do we want to look at doing this every year? I, I know that we have done it consecutively now three years in a row. Um, I will tell you, when we came out of COVID, um, the car show and the fair was unbelievable. Like, we had a crazy amount of people, so we definitely want to keep running that. Um, and I will tell you that, uh, Nicole will tell you, Tim Wilson will tell you, that you get the car show people going to a certain place, and they want to keep going. So, it's one of those things where, um, you almost want to keep the ball rolling if it's, if it's rolling. So, thinking about some ideas, I'm sure we'll be talking about that probably soon, if there's anything that you think we could change, or whatever. So, thank you, guys. Next thing on the agenda is the mural pictures in discussion. Um, I did print, and I think, um, Mark also sent pictures.
Just now, actually, I just texted a few minutes ago.
If anybody wants to see, anybody, I know you've got to see them.
Black hair, Mel, if they're lectures.
Um, this is a, a couple of ideas for the wall that, um,
Blake Wheeler.
Blake Wheeler actually, um, designed based off of some ideas. And we've already, uh, paid half of Mr. Wheeler's, um, um, quotes. We did that in the last, uh, last month's meeting. Um, what we are down to is, which, uh, mural are we going to look at? Are we going to look at the top or the bottom? I think the biggest difference is the side, one of the recommendations was the soldiers might be a little too big on the top one, so they shortened it down a little bit.
Yeah, and the sign.
And the sign.
And the sign, welcome sign.
Yeah, so.
I'd like to edit that one better.
Did you edit the one that's in the bottom?
Yeah.
So, basically, today we need to make a, um, a vote on which one, um, because I think he needs to get started on.
Ms. Blue just informed me that he was actually going to start yesterday, but we had to wait on that.
Okay.
Yeah, so he's ready to, he's ready to start whenever we give a go at it. Or if there's any subtle changes that we want to make or addition, I don't think he would oppose to it.
Now, we'll tell you that these prints are not as clear as.
As his picture is big.
Yeah, yeah. So.
Yeah.
You're, you're looking at it as probably, as you see.
What building is that?
I think that's the chemical plant, isn't it?
Is that evidence?
Far left.
Does that look like a clock on it or something?
Let me look at Mark's text.
Sorry, I can make out everything else.
Yes, that's a chemical plant.
Okay.
You can't see it there, but on here, I can see valves and.
That's a clear version.
Oh, okay, it looks like a clock in a building.
DuPont, um, yeah.
Okay, yeah, that looks better.
I'll be honest with you, the, uh, picture.
That looks better.
That's a lot better.
I am thankful you have a Navy guy in there, you know.
A what?
Being Navy.
Yeah.
A what?
A Navy guy.
All right, any discussion? Um, Michael, did you see a better?
I did, I, you should be careful, I don't understand what you're saying.
Any discussion on the two pictures?
No, I like, I like the edited version. I think, uh, the edits he made kind of shows it well. So I'll go ahead and make a motion to, uh, approve the edited version and let it get started ASAP.
All right, so we have a motion to accept the bottom picture, which is the edited version. Any discussion on that? Or do we have a second?
I'll second.
Melanie seconds that. Um, any discussion?
No.
All those in favor of the edited version, uh, say aye. Those opposed? All right, we will let, uh, Mark, uh, if you or Ms. Blue can let, uh, Mr. Wheeler know then, or go ahead and start that edited version. Young and good job.
I think we want to have, uh, any question, good weather, within the next few days.
Yeah, I know this weekend.
It looks pretty sunny.
It's gonna be dry and not real hot.
I didn't think it was supposed to rain today, but it's raining.
All right, uh, first item under New Business, uh, G A I Consultants Kickoff, um, set for October the eighteenth, which is this Friday. Um, so ten o'clock this Friday, um, G A I Consultants are going to be coming down to, to Belle to, uh, take a look at the streetscapes, the, um, start putting a plan together for the sidewalks, the old-timey, um, lights. Um, as we already know, there was, uh, four thousand dollars that was put aside by the Greater Canal Valley Foundation for that. I will tell you, um, a little bird told me that, um, somewhere along the way, around another thirty-seven thousand dollars was donated, um, for this cause as well. Um, so they will be here, um, Friday to kind of go through and start putting a plan together on that as well. Okay?
Like Friday at ten?
This Friday at ten o'clock, Friday at ten, yeah. Um, second item, A S P Proposal to Change Email Services. Um, we are going to house that. So we will discuss that in the next meeting. I don't have all the details on that, to be honest with you. I have some and all of that, so we will house that. Um, item number C, item number, um, item C, M S four permits. Thrasher looking into that. So, um, a little information on M S four. M S four is actually a permit. Um, it stands for Municipal Separate Sewer, Storm Sewer Systems. And, um, the D E P actually requires, um, municipalities or anyone with storm sewer runoff to actually do testing and permits on maintaining or testing that water and, um, um, reporting back to the D E P any findings. That kind of went away to the wayside or was kind of paused back in two thousand sixteen, um, across the board. The bad part is, um, most municipalities knew that there was a pause, but now D E P knew nothing about that pause. So, um, we did receive a notice of violation, um, for our storm sewer, um, from the D E P. I will tell you that Mar Met also received a notice of violation. And, um, basically, uh, the town is actually, basically, going to be actually doing, uh, samples, submitting, um, um, information back to D E P, doing public outreach on what the M S four program is, uh, and then basically what the, and then Thrasher, who is our engineer, is going to help us with that and get back to the D E, D E P to report our findings based on the sampling and a plan of action to make sure we're complying going forward. We were not fined for that. It was actually just a, a fine and fix violation, basically, from D E P. Um, and then we will be doing annual reporting, um, every year. Kevin down at Senator, or Senator Plant will be doing that going forward. Okay, any questions on that? Nothing to vote on. It was more of just an information. All right. Um, item number four, um, is the new garbage operation, starting in September of twenty twenty-five, price increase. So I know we have talked about this. It has actually been released now. Um, as of today, we pay forty dollars a ton to haul our refuse from the Town of Belle to our landfill. And in September of twenty twenty-five, that's going to ninety-three dollars and fifty cents a ton. So as you know, um, the, um, salvage yard or the, the dump is actually, uh, pretty much are going to be at capacity, and then will be shut down in September. It actually is still going to be active, but it's going to be actually a, for lack of better words, a relay yard to where towns will dump, and then Waste Management, or whoever the state, the county, will actually then haul that refuse to an approved, uh, dump, so to speak. Um, because of that, town, all municipalities, including Waste Management, will actually see an increase in their, um, in their price of, um, hauling per ton. Um, so it's not just the Town of Belle, of course. One thing that we are looking at is, we are looking at getting another recycling grant, which is also on this list, um, to expand our recycling, to hopefully decrease some of our refuse. Um, I will tell you that we are hauling now to the, uh, recycling plant more than we, um, predicted. And we're thinking, hopefully, if we can actually encourage more recycling, that might help with our tonnage down the road as well. Especially if we get, uh, a, um, reci- uh, recycling, another container under a grant where it doesn't cost us anything, um, it will help reduce our tonnage as well. Keep in mind, and I joke when I say this, that you can almost tear down your house and throw it in the corner and pay a little bit extra, and the town can, will haul, haul their trash off. That, that's probably going to go away. That, that, that has not been discussed. But you've got to assume that if we're more than doubling our price per ton, um, some things are going to have to change. I know we're probably more liberal in most municipalities, and we definitely more liberal in the Waste Management when it comes to that. So we might have to make a decision down the road and how we're going to handle that as well. So. Any questions on that? All right. Uh, next item on the agenda is the Comora's Contribution. Just to let you know, um, Comora's had asked for the invoice. Um, they do give us seventy-five thousand dollars a year. Uh, that invoice has been sent, and we should be seeing any data, uh, so that's more of an F Y I.
Have they said anything about, um, D N R? And the rest of them yet?
Um, not to me. That was kind of been, uh, pretty, uh, uh, not that I'm familiar with, no. Uh, next item is the Belle Elementary Robotics Team Request for Donation. So I did hand everybody a, um, donation request from Belle Elementary Robotics Team. Um, they did put a list on here, uh, things that they are going to be paying for this year. Keep in mind, they're not expecting us to pay for all that. They are just asking for a contribution to help minimize some of the cost of registrations, competition fees, and state, uh, some travel, things like that as well.
Are they just starting out their robotics team?
They're starting out as, uh, competition, competing. They've actually been running a, a, uh, robotics team. Um, but I don't think they've been competing. I think they did compete last year for the first time. Um, so they're actually moving their, uh.
Yeah, that's one of the, yeah, that's pretty handy before, so.
Belle Elementary doesn't ask for a whole lot, to be honest with you, which, I mean, they're right here in our front door, in front back there. And what's the pleasure of council?
Well, we don't want to do the two fifty, the two fifty, so we don't want to do.
We have done two fifty, yeah, for some of the other schools, yeah.
How many motions are there? Do the regular two fifty donation?
All right, Jacob makes a motion. Uh, then Mark second step. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed? All right, now I'm going to give it to the chairman, so we can get that over to, uh, the chairman. Um, we do not have any invoices. I do not have any, um, personnel issues right now. You do have the, uh, September twenty twenty-four police report. I'll give you a few minutes to read through that. I will tell you on the very, uh, the very last item, nine twenty-nine, um, there was an arrest, um, of a prowler in the area on Seven Street. He was arrested. Um, unrelated to the prowling piece, but he was a prohibited person carrying possession of firearms. There is some, um, several items in here about suspicious people walking, um.
I mean, there's been quite a few people up and down our street that I've never seen before.
Yeah.
At night. So we're getting more and more. But we have a police officer there staying on top of this.
Well, it seems that, um, sometimes they know when the police officers are there, when he's not. So you might have to look at adjusting forward a couple hours, backward a couple hours, maybe something like that.
Maybe like a shift overlap or something.
It's going to make it entertaining, yeah.
I think this is just me speaking, my personal opinion. I think there needs to be a little revamp of our, uh, sports. And, hey, that's just me.
Sure.
I mean, they do an awesome job. I mean, I, I see Hot all the time, and, you know, he, he, uh, definitely appreciate what he does at night, and, uh, he takes care of business, I have to say that. He does, uh, I've, uh, been witness to a few of them, and, uh, he does take care of business.
Um, any questions around the physicals?
I see a Ben is high.
He is, uh, very rarely leaves the front porch from any time I'm up there, I guess. All right, we'll keep moving. Items from Mayor, um, of course, he's not here, but I will tell you that he just sent me a text, and they did vote to close, so I guess they do vote tonight.
I think they're voting on after each meeting.
Which makes no sense to me, because if you vote to close Belle, but not Maude, then the whole thing falls apart.
But that just tells you.
Yeah, it's predetermined.
Yeah. So anyway, they did vote to close, and, um. All right, items from Attorney, ready?
I'm ready.
All right. Items from Council, Michael? All right. Mr. Dowden?
No, other than the help Ms. Blue has done for the, the mural. I definitely appreciate it. But can't wait to see it get started.
Yeah, I, I will say, Ms. Blue, you've done a lot in a short period of time, so we do appreciate your contribution to the town as well. Especially for someone who is not from there, so.
Yes, especially being, being a newbie.
We appreciate it.
Well, thank you.
Ms. Melanie?
Uh, just want to say thanks to everybody that did volunteer. Ms. Blue did volunteer, and she was very, very helpful. I felt like that, um, well, she said she felt like she was training, and I said, "Yeah, I felt like that I was," you know, she was in training, but, um, she, she did help a lot, and she learned a lot, because she'd never done anything like that before. So, um, we got a band coming up on Friday, the twenty-fifth. It's going to be Mike Chastain, and I think he was called like the Lonely Cowboy, or Lonely something or another. But, um, they've actually changed the name of the band, but it's going to be, they're going to be here Friday night. It's a new band, so it's, they're, they're supposed to be really good. I mean, I've talked to some other people. It's heard in other places, they're supposed to be really good. Um, they're wanting to do a, we normally shut it down, November, we don't have one, a, a Friday night one. And December, we don't have a Friday night one, because of the Christmas and the dinners and all that. However, they have asked to have a New Year's Eve party, but it's not like a regular New Year's Eve party, because they want to start at like seven and the end of the night. So, I mean, they're wanting out of here early, you know. But my thing is, is, and I want to just kind of throw this out, because I, you know, we can't vote on it or anything like that, but just bring it up for next meeting, is possibly maybe council, well, the Town of Belle, maybe do some finger foods, for lack of words, uh, for the people that come that night, go ahead and charge them the five dollars to get in, uh, that have the free finger foods and free drinks, and maybe council, maybe serve or something. Because since they've started, they have brought us in quite a bit of money. Um, and when I say brought us in, we bought some new tables, we bought some new chairs, and we've had some other things that their money has went for, that they've agreed to, you know. and we've had some other things that their money has went for, that they've agreed to, you know? So they've really helped in a, a lot of different ways. Um, they've continued to bring a lot of money to pay the bands, if you don't have to pay the bands. Um, Shirley usually has food set up that she sells, but I'm thinking, you know, that night, let it be something special. You know, we'll get some orders or some finger foods or whatever, and just kind of set it out, and it'll be for, you know? But I know we have to vote on that and everything, and I just want you guys to think about that, give me some ideas or whatever.
For when, within New Year's?
It'll be New Year's Eve.
It'll be New Year's Eve, okay. From seven to nine, is that what you said they asked for?
Okay, I can put that on the agenda for next month?
Yeah. And other than that, that's... Yard sale, I guess the yard sales went okay. I did well, so, I don't know if anybody else did well, but I did well on my yard sales, so...
How's that, how's the livestock?
Well, we did have that, and there was quite a few people came from out of town, stuff, so...
Okay. All right, thank you, ma'am. Ms. Nicole?
The only thing I'll get on since Mellie did, and I figured she would, is the Halloween party at Trick or Treat. So six to seven Trick or Treat and seven to eight party here at the City Hall for the kids.
Thirteen hundred.
Thirteen hundred, yes. With food, drinks, games.
And we do need some volunteers, if anybody wants to help, because we will have the games set up for them to play in the gym. And then we'll serve them hot dogs, chips, and a drink. And maybe, yeah.
Well, Clay was here last year, so I'm assuming he'll want me here to help, so... Jacob?
Uh, nothing new for me.
All right. Uh, approval for visitors to address councils. I need a, a motion to allow visitors to address council.
All right.
Now, we make some motion. All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, Mark says second. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed? All right, anybody have anything?
I just want to, uh, just remind everyone that when Mr. Willie gets started, he won't be putting it straight on the wall. He'll actually be in for a couple of weeks at least, so we won't see anything for at least a couple of weeks.
He has to create the...
Yeah, he has to create the whole scene again, like...
Do we need to spruce up around the wall?
Yeah, so we talked about, um...
The drainage gate, that's gonna be later. That was, that was part of the, I think we talked about it last meeting. But just some weed eating and, uh...
What do you say about the drain on top there?
Eventually, it probably would need one, some, just, uh, water, 'cause you could tell in some of those pictures, you can see some water damage, so...
Then we, we also probably need to pressure wash the lawn?
He didn't, did he say, he didn't?
You know, I can't remember. At one point, he did say he wanted it pressure washed.
At one point, yeah.
And then, I'm not really sure when, you know, now that he's doing the plastic, but I would think you don't want flaky bits on there, so I would think it could be a bad idea.
So we can have Kevin, we got the jetter up there, we can have Kevin pick it up and pressure wash.
Yeah, I don't think the weeds are that bad on the bottom, but I can go up there. I'm off after tonight, or Thursday night.
Well, I can have, um, well, we can get a hold of Adam and have him, um, go up with the crew and, and take care of the front, and then, um, I know sanitary is actually at Maple Road, uh, getting out some lines up there. Um, cause engineers in the process of running a camera through the, um, through the sewer lines, actually picking up where the manhole's on there.
Yeah.
Um, so he's, he's up to do it with the jetter anyway, so he can stop and, um, jet the wall there, so...
Perfect.
Okay, so I'll, uh, I'll have Dave reach out to Adam and Kevin tomorrow on that.
Perfect.
Okay.
Sounds good. Jane?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, but the word is on John, or Bedmore, I have a neighbor that has about four tires that's been in his driveway, I know, for the last two to three years. And we told him, you know, the Canola County thing is, but nothing's happened. They stay full of water.
Yeah. And they're in his driveway?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. I'll, uh, get with you in a second.
All right.
All right, anything else?
Did you not close the week of Thanksgiving, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then between Christmas and New Year's, when there's no school, there's no gym.
Right.
Is that correct?
And then, like, I'm not sure, when, when school out for Christmas, do you know, and Thanksgiving? Because we will have the dinners there too, so, and we'll have to set up like the day before the dinners, so...
Okay.
Yeah, I don't have, but...
I'll find out when school's...
That's right, 'cause you, do you have a Thanksgiving dinner too?
Yeah.
I forgot about that.
Yeah, so Thanksgiving dinner...
So that's not been said either, right?
Fifteen, fifteen.
Thanksgiving dinner, here's the fifteenth, so fourteenth and the fifteenth, then we will not have open gym. And then four, actually, twelfth, thirteenth, and fourteenth. So fourteenth is the Christmas dinner, thirteenth the parade, which we always have Santa up here and hot chocolate with Santa. So that means the twelfth, which is Thursday before, so it would be twelfth, thirteenth, and fourteenth, twelfth and thirteenth, it will be Christmas.
Then what's the twelfth?
Well, twelfth is the day before.
The day before, we'll have to set up for the dinner and everything. Even though we're having a catered in?
Thirteenth is the parade, Christmas parade, and then we always, um, have, um, hot chocolate with Santa, hot, um, up here.
That won't affect the big room, though, right?
Yeah, that's where we'll have it.
And then we'll be, we're already set up for the Christmas dinner on the fourteenth, the day after. So we'll be setting up for the dinner on the twelfth. Then we'll have, um, hot chocolate and cookies with Santa on the thirteenth, dinner on the fourteenth.
So we'll set up the, the gym for the dinner, and then we'll have the hot chocolate and stuff with Santa in the big meeting room.
I thought we always had the parade on Saturday.
I'm just going by...
Yeah, I thought it was Friday, yeah.
Yeah. I'm just going by what I put in the calendar last month.
Yeah, 'cause last year we did the parade on Saturday, and then we did the Friday, but we're going to switch them this year.
Yeah, I know, this last month, we talked about thirteenth parade, fourteenth.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so I know that you're, that they held that in the gym on the Thursday night, but the reason I'm asking is because of the meeting that's in the room.
You said the big meeting room, I was thinking of the gym. No, you're fine with the meeting room.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that doesn't interfere with, it will Halloween night, but it won't those others.
Christmas.
Which?
It won't the others.
The meeting room.
Yeah, that's where we'll have the hot chocolate.
You always had the hot chocolate in the gym.
Because we have to set up for the, see, it's like Friday night, we'll have the parade.
Correct.
Okay, but we, we'll have to set up, the twelfth, we'll have to start setting up the tables and stuff in the gym for the twelfth.
Where do you have the?
Over here.
You have it over here?
Yeah.
Okay.
The hot chocolate and stuff, because remember, we put the balloons and stuff over there last year?
I don't remember.
We, I don't think we were there last year.
Yeah, we said, no, we weren't, we were at the town, we were.
So what we'll do is, is on Thursday night, which is the twelfth, we'll be setting the chairs up, decorating the tables and everything in the gym for the dinner, okay? Then Friday night, we'll have hot chocolate with Santa, but it'll be over in the big meeting room. And that way, we'll ha, already have those tables set up, so we don't have to try to do it that morning.
So you can have your meeting over Thursday?
That was the question.
Yes, yes.
Yes, Thursday, you can have that over there, yes.
All right, anything else?
I don't know if you're interested, but I did come up with five ideas to help the security of the town. I don't really want to read them out, so if somebody just wants to look at their cake and burn it out and up, and then might load some juices or get some more ideas started, and one I didn't put on there was recently, one of the other cities is having their police, uh, they put out that they were hiring, but they waived the physical fitness exam, so I don't know if it's something you're allowed to do, is waive stuff? I know, but they're doing it just to get a police in, so...
Well, here's the problem, is most of the little cities around here, like Marmad, and some of them aren't civil serviceable, civil service. So that's the difference.
And I think this is Charleston. I think so.
Are they waiving it?
Something was out on social media that they were hiring police and they were waiving. I took a screenshot of it, I can't look at it.
Are they waiving maybe people that are already certified police officers, maybe?
Probably, yeah.
Yeah. If you don't care to check on that and just text it?
Yeah, I have the flyer. I, I screenshotted it, but I can't look at it right now, but, you know? And it's just some other ideas that we could do without a police. But one I did want to mention is maybe holding something for the police to come in and talk to the residents. Maybe they could actually tell us how they can protect their homes a lot better, or that kind of stuff. Just having an interaction with our police officers. I know our Boy Scouts used to come, and they would do a whole thing with our Boy Scouts and do the same thing, so maybe we could do it with the residents.
Kind of like the neighborhood watch type thing?
Yes, just so he could help us better protect our stuff, if we don't have a full police force yet. And it might help the residents at least feel a little bit secure.
Yeah, 'cause I, I think one of the meetings earlier, last one, or, or one before that, I mentioned what happened to the, uh, Neighborhood Watch. And I think it just fizzled out. I mean, I know that's a residence organized group. I mean, I know the town helps, but...
See, Rosemary and I were over that.
Okay.
Okay, and we get some other helps too. But at the time, we weren't getting a lot of backing from the mayor or the police, because, you know? And then we got little stickers and stuff, and people wouldn't put them on their window, like just little things, to say, hey, you know, we're watching you, because they were afraid of repercussions.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, so, um, Adam's probably still got our signs back there. We had signs made up and everything. And they had one at the beginning of town, one at the end of town. So, I mean, if somebody's interested in something like that, again, I, I mean, I can't, you know, do it all by myself, but I mean, I would be...
What did the town do? What did we do as far as?
We would have meetings like once a month. We would have meetings once a month, and it would either be in here or in the big meeting room. And Sergeant Lilly at the time, but she's not doing it now, because he's been gone, but, um, from the Canola County Sheriff's Department would come up. They have their own Neighborhood Watch deputies that come out, and they basically tell you how you can protect your property, how you can kind of, you know, and you have like, if you want, you can have captains and stuff like that. I think one thing that scared the people off is, and I don't, was she here at the time, Shannon, whenever that lady came from Kansas Creek and was talking and...
Yeah, she burned up a lot.
Yeah, she, she was talking about, we had to do, like, start a bank account, and we, we needed to have food baskets for people, and we needed to do this and that, and we didn't want to get into that, we just wanted the Neighborhood Watch. But a lot of people didn't want, you know, which we didn't want to, we weren't gonna start a new, you know, bank account, stuff like that for that. But, I mean, if we can get some people involved, it helps, it really does. I mean, I've been to different places with Sergeant Lilly, whenever he would come up here, and we would go to different meetings with him and stuff. And it really does help.
It does, as long as you have
People.
People to do it, because I can tell you, my wife and I, when we lived in Rand, we was over the Neighborhood Watch program there at the community center. And what I found was, my wife and I driving through Rand at two o'clock in the morning,
Yep.
and we were the only two. And so, I'm all for it.
This sounds like Danny White might be a candidate for...
I'm all for helping, um...
I think just posting the signs.
Yeah.
Because when my car got broken into, I actually posted a big sign in my yard saying, you are being monitored, I will prosecute. And I haven't seen anybody on my street since.
Yeah.
Well, see, we just, I mean, we got them for a little bit of nothing. They were just like Neighborhood Watch, and they were claims, it wasn't something you had to put on there and scrape off. And all you have to do is put it on your window, and people see that, and it returns them from, you know, because they're like, they don't know if you've got a camera, they don't know, you know, whatever.
One of my ideas was cameras. I think our, our town needs more cameras.
Well, look, we're working on that, I, I will tell you.
We are such a little town, there's no reason why we shouldn't have one at each end, so we can catch them coming and going.
I cannot agree more. I, I will tell you that we are looking at that.
Good, 'cause I've looked into it, it's not that expensive.
Correct, I agree.
And it's cheaper than a police officer, so we can't have a police officer, and it's what I'm saying.
Insurance and...
Yes.
Um, I agree.
Traffic cams, that's...
That, that would be good too.
Yeah.
One that's movable, because then you can move it to different streets, because they'll learn which street it's on, and it won't go down that street anymore.
I, I really like the idea of having a meeting with the police officer to answer your questions. Because I'll tell you, I speak with Hunt, um, he said that there, like, I, I've seen a lot of things on Facebook about prowlers, but he said, nobody's calling the police.
Well, people are calling, but there's nobody answering the phones.
Yeah.
Another idea was a dispatcher, just have somebody there that handles the police.
Keep in mind, nine-one-one would be my first call, personally, so...
No, see, I would think local, that would be my first, because they're closer.
I, I want to say this again, I mean, I used to be with the state, so I, I know, but we had a shooting down here on Sixth Street one night. We did not have a police officer on duty, okay? I called nine-one-one, and they dispatched a state trooper out. The state trooper came down our street, and the guy that actually seen the guy running and went chasing after him, and the guy had a gun. He said to the police officer, he said, the state trooper, he said, do you want the description? He said, no, he said, I'm not here to go catch anybody, I'm here to make sure nobody gets hurt. And that was his...
That's what I'm worried about too, because the talk online, people's not understanding the legal. They just think that they can defend their property no matter what, but it's not, that's not true, that they were thinking it. So if you had the cop explaining
I agree.
It might stop that too.
Yeah, I agree, yeah. A lot of people misunderstand the, the council doctrine, it's not just, she got on sides.
Absolutely not.
Yeah. All right.
That, that's a good idea.
Yeah, I'll get this into council as well, to all, to all council members.
It might not be great, but if it gives the juices flowing, if somebody else has an idea.
But we have a pool, Davis, is?
Shannon, that's some ideas, some, some of the members of the community have.
We have a decent vigilante group of residents, that, I mean, I know of social media vigilants, but a lot of, a lot of warriors, but, uh, some, some can happen.
I think it'd be a good idea to have a police officer, have a meeting, you know, schedule it, advertise it, and say, you know, if you have questions about people around your house, security and stuff.
How to do you secure your house and your problems.
This is something that we're gonna do for the neighborhood to give them ideas, you know?
The bad thing is you schedule, nobody shows up.
Yeah.
You know, look at this.
Well, we...
Worth a shot.
But you scheduled it back from there.
At least you said you did it.
Yeah.
Again, though, the police department comes under the mayor.
Correct.
You know, I, I'll take it in consideration, go with that.
Well, we were talking about like Neighborhood Watch, how we had Neighborhood Watch before. And I said, Adam, they probably still have our signs back there if somebody wanted to, you know, pick up and, and start that again.
Again, I, I'd just like help.
But if you think you can get that done, you know, didn't do too well the first time.
But we didn't have the back on, of the mayor then either. You weren't the mayor?
Yeah, no, I was.
All right, anything else?
What else on the agenda? Did we talk about the, uh, the GAI consultants Friday, ten o'clock? Be right here at City Hall, uh, the ASP.
We, that's the one thing we did not, uh, discuss.
ASP.
So ASP proposal to change email services. I didn't have the details on it.
We, uh, so change the email services from Southern Lake Mail dot com, which is our email addresses right now, to change into an Outlook or, uh, through, uh, Microsoft three sixty-five. Uh, they want fifteen dollars per month, uh, for the six, uh, licenses we have. And then also, it'd be a hundred dollars to change them from, uh, the Southern Lake Mail addresses to the Microsoft three sixty-five addresses. Um, right now, it's like Bell Mayor, Bell Recorder, at Southern Lake Mail dot com. We would take it to Bell Mayor at TownOfBell dot com, so that would be the change. The thing is, Sunlink, they're having some problems. We've had some, uh, issues where they had to archive our emails and everything else, because there's not a lot of room on the servers and everything. So I'm asking...
Is that fifteen dollars per, like, each six?
Fifteen dollar per each one, okay. And, uh, so I'm asking for, you know, a motion to, uh, go ahead and make that change. And ASP would take care of that for us, uh, which is who's taking care of all of our computers and everything now. Uh, to get that changed, and then they would do a hundred dollars charge on each one of those, a one-time charge.
I would say, I have thousands of files, uh, emails saved on my computer pro- I would say, I have thousands of files, uh, emails saved on my computer from way back to Kim Holmes.
They, they will actually take every one of those and move them all over and everything. And then the next thing would be the Town of Bell website, so we'll get off of the Town of Bell, West End website, go back to the old website that we had years ago, so. Uh, that'll come later, we'll do that later. So, we have a motion to, um, approve that.
Same with you.
Okay, the motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, say in, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like, say aye, so. The MS four permit, uh, Thrasher is actually gonna look into that, uh, that is actually where we need to take samples and everything for stormwater going out into the river. Uh, it's something that was taking place until about the year two thousand fourteen. Two thousand fourteen, it all just stopped, and, uh, and we thought that there was a waiver, but, uh, they're stating that it is, it was not a waiver done, and so that actually will, uh, need to take place, so we've got Thrasher working on that as of today with the sanitary board mail. So, that's another thing. Garbage operations, did we talk about that?
We did.
That's forty dollars now, tons, we're good at ninety-three dollars and fifty cents. Uh, it's pretty hefty increase, and, um, and hopefully, you know, we can look at a new recycling grant and everything there, and then, uh, the, what else were we talking about earlier today? Y'all, y'all took care of the, took care of the mural, right?
We've got that taken care of. We've got our goggles taken care of.
Okay. I think that's it. So, I think I missed, uh, Mark and Ms. Blue to be here Friday. Yeah, I was, I saw her outside. And, uh, so have her, but you're for sure on Friday. And then we'll go out with GAI consultants, uh, GAI consultants, we had four thousand dollars. Uh, that came from the Greater Canola Valley Foundation, uh, actually, out of the Rick Lord, uh, found another thirty-nine thousand dollars. So, they're putting that with that four thousand to actually, uh, help us out with this GAI consultants, uh. Uh, they, they will write all the checks for all of that, they won't have to write anything out, out of account, or anything like that. So, we'll go with them on Friday, and, and try and talk about, uh, you know, what we, what we can do. All right?
All right, if there's no other business, you need to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Cool, all right. We need a second, Matt only seconds. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And, uh, Mel K. School Board vote is closed, Bell on the five.